Good evening and welcome to the May 13th, 2013 Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. If you will please join me in rising for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we enter our moment of silence, certainly hopefully all the mothers in the room and those out there enjoyed their special day yesterday, Mother's Day. And I also, in case you are not aware, Stan White, who was a longtime Commissioner in Dare County and then served as our Senator, filling Mark's unexpired term, his mother passed away, so if you'll keep him and his family in your thoughts and prayers. And with that, I ask for a moment of silence, please. First on the agenda this evening is the Agenda Approval.
I make a motion, we approve the Agenda?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. This evening, we have two public hearings on the agenda. The first public hearing is on proposed zoning amendment to Section 153.078, access to US 158/Croatan Highway and NC 12/Virginia Dare Trail. This is to clarify language restricting driveway access to US 158 and NC 12. We do have, or we did have two sign up sheets this evening, specific to the two different public hearings. Do we have anyone sign up this evening?
No ma'am.
Okay. We didn't have anyone sign up this evening for the either public hearing, but there's still an opportunity to speak. So if you do wish to speak on this public hearing for this proposed zoning amendment, please raise your hand. Does anyone wish to speak on this public hearing? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing and open the floor for discussion. Greg, do you want to do just a quick introduction like you did at the last meeting?
I certainly will.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. What we have here tonight, as the mayor described, was some modifications, more of a housekeeping modification to our zoning text that would make it crystal clear what that Section 153.078 means when you're trying to access 158 on a property that has a public right of way, that it has public right of way, and it gives the Board of Commissioners the option of reviewing it on a case-by-case basis when you do not have a public right of way to access from. And that was the original intent, and this just clarifies that and codifies it into our zoning code.
Great, thank you very much.
And on March 19th, Planning Board recommended approval.
Great, thank you. Okay. Any comments or questions or discussion?
No, I support the proposed amendment. I think it's consistent and that it cleans up the language and will make the ordinance more clear.
Okay. Any?
Yeah, I agree. I think one of the problems we have on the bypass is there's a whole lot of curb cuts that maybe in hindsight could have been avoided. There's one place in particular, if you go from, I think, Fresh Pond down to Eighth Street, which is the town line, I think there's five curb cuts there in one block. There's two of them for Coastland Times, one for, one that services Harris Teeter and the drugstore, and two others. And as I said, in hindsight, if we could, we could have gone back there, we might have been able to make that a little better area right there. Too many curb cuts in total in the bypass, I think everybody pretty much agree with that, so anything we can do to look at them in the future and try to minimize, I think is a good idea.
Thank you.
I agree.
Okay. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the proposed amendment to 153.078, access to US 158, to clarify language restricting driveway access to US 158 in North Carolina 12, and that this amendment is consistent with all comprehensive plans and other official adopted plans of the town of Kill Devil Hills that are applicable. I think the amendment is reasonable and in the public interest as it clarifies the existing ordinance.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. The second public hearing this evening is on proposed zoning amendment to Section 153.073 F 2A landscaping requirements to add composite materials as an option for perimeter screening between incompatible uses. Again, there wasn't anyone that signed up, but does anyone in the audience wish to speak at this public comment on this topic? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. And Greg?
Again, this is more or less a housekeeping and clarification amendment. It was brought up, I think, in one of our Planning Board meetings, that our perimeter screening language may be a bit dated because it really didn't address some of the more modern types of materials that we may want to see for fences, and quite frankly, that we have seen for fences. I'll give you a couple of examples, maybe the hardy panels or hardy planks aren't really addressed, and there's some soundproofing fencing that's made out of composite materials, so therefore, it was recommended that we add composite materials to the listing of approved materials, and again, on March 19th, the Planning Board recommended approval for this to the Board.
Great, thank you. Any questions, comments, or discussion from the Board?
I support the, ma'am.
I do too, yeah.
Same here.
Makes sense, okay. A motion? Anyone like to take a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the proposed zoning amendment 153.073 landscaping requirements to add composite material as an option for perimeter screening between incompatible uses. The proposed amendment to add composite materials is consistent with all comprehensive plans and other official adopted plans of the town that are applicable. The amendment is reasonable and in the public interest because it permits the uses of common screening materials.
A second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion or comments? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is a special, not really, an introduction, more of a recognition. And thank you, Paul and April, for joining us tonight. I'm sorry, your sister-in-law, sorry. Well, sister-in-law's name is Amber. Thank you, Amber, for joining us too. Paul, I'm going to join you at the podium, is that okay? Can you? Okay, that'd be great. Some of you may recall that Paul had to give his resignation to serving on this board several months ago due to ongoing health issues that he's battling, and we did not have the opportunity at that time to officially recognize and thank him for all the service to Kill Devil Hills. Goodness, how many years when it started as a member of Street Improvements and then Planning Board and...
Seventeen, wasn't it?
It was, it was a bunch.
That's right. So just obviously, he's put a lot of time and effort into Kill Devil Hills and his heart, even though he's not serving now, I know will always be with Kill Devil Hills. He held, if you didn't hear me, he held positions on our Street Improvement Committee, on our Planning Board, and then he was elected in 2005 as a Commissioner and served up until March. So we appreciate you coming out this evening and letting us recognize you publicly for all of your service, and certainly wish you very well and with all of your recovery. And we just have a special card down here, and you're very welcome. And if you want to say a few words, you're welcome to, but thank you so much.
Well, I was always talking in the group, so I have to say something. It's been really tough not being out here. I realize how much I miss this, until Debbie sent me an email the other day. Been here a long time, seen a lot of changes, a lot of good changes, got good people leaving the town, and people like Greg that I've known forever. Greg actually worked on some of my construction sites at one time. It's just, it's hard not to be here, but things come up in your life and you have to deal with them. Just appreciate knowing everybody and having a chance to serve each of y'all, and we'll keep in touch.
Thank you. Okay. Next on our agenda is the time for public comment. This is a time set aside for anyone to speak on any topic that they wish to address to the Board or the town. We do ask when you're, if you wish to speak this evening, if you're speaking as an individual, that you limit your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, that you limit your comments to five minutes. We did have a sign up sheet, so we'll start with that, and then we'll call from the floor if anyone else wishes to speak. And Paul Manning signed up. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you very much, Board and public. My name is Paul Manning, I live on 509 Telegraph Court in Kill Devil. I came to speak on beach nourishment. A little bit about my background. I graduated from Case Institute of Technology in Cleveland in 1975 in geology, and had studied what we called back then shoreline erosion as part of my degree. So I don't profess to be an expert in the subject, I do have a studied background in the subject. Of course, back when I was in geology, we were talking about plate tectonics, and at that time, there had been a theory, and was just getting into wider acceptance. Nowadays, we talk about global climate change as a theory, so who knows where we'll go with that. But I'd like to commend the Board for tackling this issue. I know it takes a lot of political will, it certainly takes a lot of money too, but I'm very happy to see this moving from the area of politics into the enactment and doing something, because beach nourishment really is more science than politics, and that's where it belongs. We certainly have some major problems of sustainability of our beaches that we need to address. Of course, everyone in this room knows the importance of the beach to this community. So I hope it can be approached in a methodical and non-political arena, if we might say it that way, but I know it, I've seen many, many cases where it has been successful. Obviously, it's a sustained thing, we're not looking for a quick fix here. I don't think anyone that is advocating beach nourishment thinks it's just a one-shot deal. We need to have the political will, and of course, the capital to sustain this. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks for coming up.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else this evening in the audience that wishes to speak? Yes, Jack, welcome.
Jack McCombs, I live at 917 Cedar Drive, Kill Devil Hills. Paul makes good coffee and he's a good public speaker. Up until a few weeks ago, I was very skeptical about beach nourishment, but I have completely changed my mind, and now I'm a very strong advocate. And very briefly, let me explain why. There have been some local carmudgeon negative comments about beach nourishment as it applies to Nags Head, but the engineering results have really been pretty outstanding. In the short term, the people that are going to benefit mostly by beach nourishment, the oceanfront folks, are also going to pay the most for beach nourishment. And just as an aside, in the process of myself educating myself about beach nourishment, I really appreciate the town putting so much documentation up on the website. It's taken a long time to get through that, and I won't pretend that I understand 100% of it, but it was very helpful for me to come into the conclusion that this is good. In the long term, I think all of this are going to benefit and benefit significantly through beach nourishment. If we lose a lot of houses or the hotels on the beach, all of our taxes are going to rise dramatically. So I think if you talk about lifecycle cost of beach nourishment, on the other side of that coin is what's called cost of not doing beach nourishment. A key number for me became the difference between my new taxes, which is caused by the Neutral Revenue Act, and what I would have to pay for beach nourishment. And the way I came to my number, I went through the presentation that was given on the website, and I found a couple properties that were about the same as mine, and as it works out, I'll have to pay about $8.35 a month. That's much less than what I pay Paul for the coffee I go down to his house. To be fair, Paul, I have more than one cup. There's two models I think we can look at to see if we should do that. The first one is south of us at Nags Head and the effect that beach nourishment has had on that community, and the model that is now being presented at Kitty Hawk. In the 16 years that I've lived here, I've seen a lot of houses go away. What I would like to know, if it's, if you can find out the numbers, how has this affected their tax rate for people that live off the beach? I think that would be pretty revealing information. I'd also like to know how much that Hilton Hotel has made up that difference. We have many more hotels. What would happen to us if we lost those motels as well as the houses there? It just seems to me, I'm probably close to my three minutes, that it's a prudent thing to do, and for the cost, it's financially smart to do it. So I hope all of us have the courage to go ahead and press ahead for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Thanks, Jack.
Is there anyone, anyone else this evening that would like to speak at this public comment? Yes, Mike, welcome.
Thank you. Mike Lowack, 106 Port Hole Court. One thing about the beach nourishment project that I would just like to maybe bring up, because when I sat through all of the presentations, they always started off with a whole-town approach, and it seems like the last couple of conversations we've been having has been all strictly on the north end with that special zone just being at the northern end of our beach. And if we are trying to actually dissipate the $5 million potential setup cost that it's going to take us if we can't get Kitty Hawk or Duck or one of the neighboring towns to help us split it, it may be better for us to increase that entire special tax zone and do a full beach nourishment catching up to where Nags Head is, and hopefully keeping us at a point where we'll match right up with Kitty Hawk. And then that way, the taxes can be spread out more evenly because the north end is going to require more feet per square inch or inch per square, I get confused. But that's just my thought, you know? If we're going to go ahead and do it, let's go ahead and maybe think about applying it all the way over, so then that way, that initial $5 million setup is, you know, absorbed by more of the folks instead of just the northern end. Then the second thing I'd like to talk about is beach driving. I made a flip comment last time about maybe charging $1,000 for a permit. I definitely think we should go with the permitting process and keep beach nourishment, because speaking to an old Commissioner in Nags Head, his name is Dick Harper, he told me that when they were trying to do away with beach nourishment, they let the townfolk pick which areas, and one of the areas happened to be down by Seagull. And where the ruts went away, we all know what happened to Seagull Court, because his description to me was, when the ruts were there in the sand, it dissipated some of the normal wave action, keeping it from getting all the way up to the dune. So if that is indeed true, maybe we do want to keep beach driving, maybe we do want to get some permits in place, maybe we want to limit the amount of beach accesses so we can more closely monitor it, and that way, we can, you know, cut back on the rabble-rousing and beach destruction. Thanks, folks.
Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Is there anyone else this evening that would like to speak at this public comment time? Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you. We'll move on to response to public comment. And if you don't mind, the next item on our agenda is going to be under Old Business, where we actually have beach nourishment as an agenda item, so if everyone's comfortable with that, that spoke, we'll just kind of address your comments and discuss some of the input shared at that time. And at some point, beach driving is going to come into this discussion as well, Mike, either at the time we're really making decisions with beach nourishment or not. I don't know if anyone would like to address anything specifically right now, or...
Do you want us to respond to a public comment?
Do you want, I was thinking on beach nourishment, we'll wait, if that's okay, and not do individual, but if anyone has anything specific they want to share on beach driving, we could do that now, unless you want to wrap it all up into beach nourishment.
Well, I'll comment on beach driving.
Okay, okay.
If this is done as a Section 206 federally funded or reimbursed, a project of beach driving, we'll have to follow the federal mandates, which means it will be prohibited. If we do our own project, then the Board has the, can either approve or disapprove of beach driving. Generally speaking, most communities that do beach nourishment tend to disapprove and not allow beach driving during the year. The general feeling is, is that having spent that much to reconstruct the beach and plant the dunes and so forth, that things that destruct or destroy the beach or mar the beach should not be permitted. And that's the general, I think, arguments counter that can be made, but that's what generally happens in most communities. So that's sort of what I would expect might happen here, that the Board at that time will decide that it's not appropriate. But that's generally the way it has worked out in the past.
Anyone else have any comments on beach driving this time? Okay. Okay, well, let's move on to Old Business then. And basically, the Old Business that we have before us tonight is on beach nourishment. We first discussed this as a Board discussion back on April 8th, and then we hosted a public forum on April 24th, where we strongly encouraged citizens to come out and share their input with us on beach nourishment, and then we also promoted that this evening as another opportunity for the public to come speak to us about their thoughts. Back at the April 24th public forum, we had a number of citizens here that spoke in favor of beach nourishment, and we had one citizen who provided a couple of concerns, but ultimately understood the, I think, probably the impact of why in this area that we live in, it might be something that we need to do. And so basically, we're here tonight as a Board to further that discussion, and I think some of the key points that we need to make to continue forward progress would be really deciding whether or not we want to go after the federal 206 project or not, so we can just abandon that or not, but we really need to make that decision. And we also need to provide some guidance to the Dare County Board of Commissioners about implementing the one-cent occupancy tax. They were granted permission through the General Assembly a number of years ago to adopt a two-cent occupancy tax increase to fund beach nourishment projects in Dare County, and at the time, only, the county elected only to implement the one-cent tax increase because there were not any planned projects in place at the time, other than Nags Head looked like they had enough momentum, and ultimately, that's what happened. But now that there are multiple towns discussing this, you know, certainly, we should send the message to Dare County that we want that done, if that's indeed what we want done. So with that, I'll kind of pause for a minute and open the floor for us for discussion.
I'd like to suggest that what we do is just march right down and take those one at a time. So say first, well, first perhaps, is everybody really familiar with the project as it's proposed, or should that be reviewed for the benefit of those attending tonight? Is there, is there anybody here who would like to listen to the whole 10-minute dissertation as to what the project is, or are you all pretty much up to speed, and can we ignore that and just move on? Looks like we can just move on, so let's say...
We could, but you know what? As you were asking that question, it did make me think of one thing that Mike brought up about, the first, right now, the project is slated to go from the Kitty Hawk line to Tanya, Tanya Drive. And I had a question just the other day, I happened to be at the Ramada's ribbon cutting, I was upstairs, and it was high tide, but I was thinking, wow, they wouldn't be in beach nourishment, they're further south than Tanya. And I wasn't really sure why we're not going further when it looks like we may have the need, so do you have that information?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
This is a question that Steve Albright discussed a couple of weeks ago, and I also discussed that with Ken Wilson of Coastal Planning and Engineering. And what he said they would do is they would look at the entire town, and they would also look at 5,000 feet into Kitty Hawk and 5,000 feet into Nags Head as trying to understand the system. And then they would make recommendations on what to do. And of course, there's been a lot of work done, and the Corps had studied that area that you mentioned between Tanya and Kitty Hawk, and there's also a 3,000-foot taper in Kitty Hawk there, so it would be revisiting some of that information, but also taking a look at what's going on in some other areas, and that would be part of what their proposal would be for the Board to consider.
Okay. So, please.
Let me add that the original project was for the north end, and that is because the south end of town, this beach is technically, from an engineering point of view, stable to actually accretion. In other words, we have several areas on the south beach where we have accretion of several feet per year. The beach as a whole, from Tanya south to roughly two miles south of the Nags Head town line, is considered, from an engineering point of view, stable. And so that's why Nags Head began their project two miles below the line, in other words, where the original federal project was to start and go on down, and why we are looking at from north on up. Now, the entire beach in Kitty Hawk is unstable and is eroding at a fairly significant rate, most of it about three feet per year. But the reason that that was not included in the federal project was not because of the engineering aspects, it was because of the property values had become so scant, so reduced because of the loss of the houses, that the value protected was not sufficient to justify the cost of the project. So you have both, so you have both extremes in that area there, and, but that's why. And as, our engineering study should include the southern taper and probably the northern taper as well, because the northern taper is actually to protect our own project, even if it extends technically into Kitty Hawk, and of course, that would... And of course, that would have to be with the permission of Kitty Hawk and the permission of the Corps of Engineers and so forth. The permits would all have to be applied. It might actually become a condition of the permit that such a taper be built.
Greg, what you said about taking a look at the whole thing from Kitty Hawk and part of it included, to part of Nag's Head included, and everything in between. If we started looking at that and maybe were considering it to some degree, would it delay anything that we have in mind right at this time? Or is there... I mean, if we say to do that, are we going to set ourselves back six months or a year, or whatever, or not?
Answer the first question first. You know, if you're looking at a 206, a federally authorized project, and trying to get reimbursement, yes, it would definitely hold you up, because it would be outside of that area that the Corps had studied. But if you decide to go on your own, I don't think there's any question that it's a smart thing to do, and I don't think it would hold you up at all.
We do not have easements for the areas outside of the original federal project boundaries. We do have easements within the original boundaries. So we would have to hire a firm to go after the easements, because those have to be individually negotiated with each property owner. So there is a problem, but it's not insurmountable.
Right, and how that's done in terms of the project moving forward, we need Ken Wilson to sit here and tell us about that, whether it can be dovetailed in or if it's going to actually extend the time.
Okay, thank you.
Well, a follow-up on Bill's recommendation, because I think this can be actually a relatively quick discussion and decision, is about the federal 206 and whether we want to pursue that or not. Bill, for anyone in the audience, I'm going to turn to you as kind of the seated expert at the table. Do you mind doing just a quick synopsis of what the 206 means?
206 is a system whereby we take a project that has been, from a technical point of view, approved by the federal government's agency, which in this case is the Corps of Engineers, the Wellington District of the Corps of Engineers. And we build that project to the specs that meet the federal standards. And then after we complete the building of it, at our expense, we apply to the federal government for reimbursement. Normally, when this is done, we also hire a lobbying firm to properly lobby this, which makes the lobbying firms quite happy, of course. But it's almost necessary to do that, because it's an intricate procedure. And normally, the way it actually occurs is you wait until... You start the lobbying process, you get everything set, you wait for the next hurricane, and then your lobbyist quick rushes in, and your beach becomes part of the recovery project for hurricane, whatever it was. The last one was Sandy up in New York. They're doing beaches in Florida right now as a result of that hurricane. But that's the way that gets done. It's difficult, it's unpredictable, it doesn't relieve us of the necessity of financing. And I worked at it and failed at it long enough, that I decided I really don't care to try it again. And so my position is, is that we should do this on our own, as does Nag's Head. We need to get this done. If at some time in the future, we can figure out how to also make that reimbursable. Incidentally, once it is done, if it is damaged by a storm, then you are eligible for FEMA assistance and reconstruction. But you don't get it until you... You don't get FEMA help until you've actually got a system to be helped.
And also, there's additional upfront cost involved in the 206, correct?
Well, the 206, for example, the 206 would require quite a bit of our project, I believe would be 150 cubic yards per linear foot, which is quite a bit. That's as much as they did in the extreme south end of Nag's Head. Most of Nag's Head, the northern end of Nag's Head was done at 50 cubic yards per linear foot, which I don't know what our engineering study will conclude, but it might be perfectly feasible to do a 50-yard, 50 cubic yard per linear foot project in our two miles, which even with the mobilization would be a $10 million project, much to our advantage. Whereas if we went for 206 reimbursement, we've got to stick with the federal spec. And the federal spec, as I recall, I'd have to check that, but I think it's either 130 or 140 cubic yards per linear foot. It's a lot of sand.
For the whole span?
Yeah, for that whole beach. And the federal project was a project plus the first re-nourishment. So it's really 100 cubic feet per linear foot plus the first re-nourishment, or 50, is what they were trying to do, was get a long wear period out of it. And so you have to follow that standard. Whereas we can do a perfectly acceptable 100 cubic yard per linear foot, or even 50, that will suffice and serve our purposes. So I think we have much more freedom, much more freedom to act. And we're much more flexible if we stick on our own and don't get bound by these rules.
And I believe I recall when we first received information on the 206, the timeline is a lot longer. We can't move as quickly either. So it would be several years longer before we'd ever see sand.
And that's because of another expense, which is not only do you have to get the permit from the Corps of Engineers, regulatory side, but you have to pay the civil work side to review your plans and make sure they're consistent for the federally authorized project. So there's time and money involved with that.
Yeah, that review process can take a long time, too, is my understanding.
Okay, well, I'm happy to make a motion that we do not... That we focus on a local project and do not move forward with the federal 206 project.
I second your motion, ma'am.
Any further discussion on the, specifically the 206 in that motion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then I know we also were going to talk about the one cent, I'm also thinking back, too. We might end up making this three motions. Because basically, I just did away with the 206. But before we can, I guess, really discuss number... or bullet two, the way... Suggestion number one, the way this suggestion of the first bullet was written was basically also saying, let's move forward with the local project. And I absolutely support that. You know, I'm pleased so far from what we've heard from our citizens, because it seems like some of the information that we're putting out there makes sense, good numbers. There's been a lot of... How many years, Bill, personally, have you worked on this?
I worked on this from, let's see, 97, 98, through, what was it, 2006, I think.
And it's still not done, Bill.
That's right.
No, I... Well, no, I worked on it through the defeat of the 1% sales tax.
Right, yeah.
There's a lot of history as far as work that's been done into this and into studying this. And then, of course, the current history and the study that we funded or supported funding after we took office. In addition, you know, we have a great study example with what's been done in Nag's Head. And as indicated in public comment, and also Bill's indicated before, we have the opposite study to kind of look at what's happening north of us. So I fully support the local project, and it's kind of now is the time to move forward. Anyone else want to comment?
I have to say that I've kind of combed full circle, as Jack has as well, and Jack and I have talked quite a bit about this. But while I support what beach nourishment can do for the economy, I understand some of the ramifications on the environment as well, and I've talked with several people about that. And as I've said before, I no longer vehemently oppose it, because I've seen what it's done in Nag's Head, and I see that it's, you know, it's not a worthless cause. But that said, it's really hard for me at this point to justify, at this point in time, doing what it's going to do to some of the citizens. We're looking at increases in insurance and increases in property taxes for some of the lower-level employees, for some of the lower-level citizens. And especially those on a fixed income, and that's what I deal with on a daily basis. I deal with seniors. And when they're being hit time and time again, I'm not talking about me now. I'm not talking about what I can pay. I'm taking myself out of this equation. I just have to think really long and hard about this. I know for many of us, $100 to $200 a year for beach nourishment, and that might not be much, but that $200 may put somebody over the edge. So my thoughts are mixed on this right now.
I think that Brandy's concerns are valid, because people who own properties that are valued at $150,000 a year and less...
They're going to be hit harder.
Are actually going to pay more in taxes. And while for many of us, it wouldn't appear to be that much more for them on a percentage basis, it is quite a bit more. And in taking on this project, until such time as we hit the laws of diminishing returns, that is, the beach erosion eventually will overtake this project, too, in a generation or so. But until it does, there is a long-term commitment. It's not something that we just do for five years and then stop. It's a... The initial five years are the most expensive five years, but there is still a continuing expense that's ongoing on a life cycle basis throughout the life of the program. So I think her concerns are valid, but I also think that when we look at the town as a whole, and we look at our 4,000 jobs that are in the tourist industry, we look at our 6,500, 6,800 citizens, that for the town as a whole, the benefits do outweigh those concerns. That doesn't mean we shouldn't address them, shouldn't figure out something to do about it, but I still think that the good, for the good of the whole community for this project is worthwhile considering and worthwhile doing.
Yeah, I think one statement that Jack made, I totally agree with, is, pretty simply put, it's the cost of doing nothing. And I think in the long run, if we did nothing, it would hurt more people overall, because it would hurt everybody. And I understand Brandy's concerns, and... But I agree with Bill also, that it's something I think that's going to benefit the majority of the people, and the burden will be shared, I understand that. It may be a little harder on some than on others, but it's going to be a shared burden, and I think we can do that.
And Brandy, I appreciate you bringing that up, and agree as well. Almost to just elaborate a little bit on what Bill and Mike responded to, you know, there's such a trickle effect. And you're thinking about, you know, when the economy was tanking, you know, back in 2008, 2009, and home prices fell, and what was happening in the real estate market, and buildings slowed down. The trickle effect, that affected the hairdressers and the people doing nails and fingernails and discretionary spending and memberships at the YMCA. Because of the trickle effect of how that hurt, you know, the working class so much, you didn't have to be a home builder to feel the hurt of the industry suffering. And that's my concern here, is those of us that, you know, live here and make our lives regardless of really in what capacity, if we don't have that beach, everyone will be hurting. And while I recognize there's certainly, you know, people are in all different financial positions, and you really can't tell nowadays, just even by looking, what stress people may be going through financially. If you look at what's best for the long-term viability of our town and for the people being able to make their livelihood and stay in this area, I think it's an investment that, you know, may make people reevaluate how they're using some of their discretionary spending and, you know, not go out to dinner once or twice a month that they previously were. You know, if their taxes are affected that dramatically. But I think the overall tax burden that would look like it would take to fund this, to me, still makes the most sense for that long-term viability. Well, I guess we really are at a position, you know, to... Yes, Bill, go ahead.
I'd like to bring up one more point, because several citizens have brought this up. The comment is, why can't we do something that's permanent? Why can't we build a seawall, or a weir, or a jetty, or a reef? Something that is concrete, or steel, or rock, or that is solid and will stay and is permanent, as opposed to beach nourishment, which washes away and wears away over a period of five to 10 years? And we... I think that the feeling there is, is if we're going to spend $10 million to $20 million to do something, shouldn't it be permanent? And it's not a bad argument. The main reason why it isn't being discussed, of course, is because in this state, it's illegal. It's not permitted in statute. Armoring of the coast is, has not been permitted. That doesn't mean we couldn't pursue getting the legislature to change their position on that, but it's not likely that it would happen. And even after a long fight trying to do that, we probably would be in the same position we are right now, which is faced with the only, our only apparently viable alternative being either beach nourishment, sand re-nourishment, or nothing. So that is sort of why those arguments have not been discussed or priced or looked at in an engineering sense, because the statutes simply don't permit them.
Yeah, there's places where stuff like that has been done, and what you see at some of them is, there's a wall you could fish off of, but there's not a beach you can go to.
That's why, that's why this legislature forbade it.
One thing, too, while we're still talking on all different topics here, during public comment, I think Jack raised the question about the Kitty Hawk example, the cost of not doing anything. And he specifically referenced or asked the question, if it had been studied, what has been the tax impact across the town for kind of allowing things to get to the position they're in? And also, what's the impact that the Hilton has made? And I know we have some information regarding the Hilton, okay, and maybe all of it.
Well, let me make two comments. First of all, what the Hilton generates in occupancy is apparently a state secret. You can't find out. And as a matter of fact, they won't even release the numbers for Kitty Hawk anymore, because it's so apparent that the Hilton is... Well, actually, they do for the town as a whole. And that number happens to be 25 million per year, which is their current occupancy collections. Before the Hilton was built, they had gotten down to as low as $11 million per year. So you believe the difference might have something to do with the Hilton? You did not hear that from me.
Our meetings are recorded now.
There is another very successful hotel, the Holiday Inn Express, which, in terms of room occupancy and profitability, is one of our most profitable operations on the beach. So it's not just the Hilton. But if you take those two into consideration, you have an idea of what the tourist infrastructure and cottages is doing in Kitty Hawk. It's difficult for them. I had a conversation with the county manager just Saturday morning, and we were discussing the upcoming discussion. I told him that tonight, we were going to be discussing this, and that we would be asking the commission, I hoped, we would be asking the commission to approve the additional 1% occupancy tax. And he made the comment that we are going to have to relook at the general rules for allowing that to go forth, because Kitty Hawk no longer has the property values necessary to generate the tax revenue to meet a 25% requirement for funding a beach project. So we're going to have to get that rule a little bit more flexible if they're going to be allowed to do something with that money. So that kind of tells you... So that kind of tells you, it's difficult for them, very difficult, because the, the improvements are basically gone. And then what, what is left of the land, seventy, fifty-foot lots, that are valued at three and four and five thousand dollars each now. That's very difficult, and that's something we are, we want to avoid on our north end, and that's the purpose of, of trying to, attempting to do this. Hopefully, we will be successful at that.
Bill, just to be, be clear, are you saying that because they wouldn't qualify, they'd be charged a one percent, but they wouldn't be eligible to use any of it, is that correct?
No, the, the, the current rules for using the county beach nourishment funds are that the community provides twenty-five percent of the funding, the county will provide up to seventy-five percent. That's, that's the twenty-five, seventy-five split that, that Mr. Alton has talked about previously and discussed. His concern is, is that he doesn't see any way for Kitty Hawk to raise the twenty-five percent.
Oh, okay, I see, okay.
With a, with a special tax district, that there's not enough value there to raise the sufficient funding to do a viable project. I think that's his concern. I don't, I don't think that anybody's actually worked that out, in black and white numbers, dollars and cents, but, but I, I think there's a sense that that's gonna be a problem.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And I may be speaking out of school, I wish I, I wish I hadn't gone that far, but I, anyway, that's.
No, you're recorded, so.
Yeah.
Too late now.
Well, you know, I think it's important, goes back to even the discussion we were having with the concerns you raised, if we were to suffer those kind of losses in property values, that tax burden is gonna have to shift somewhere.
That's right.
And if, or, you have to cut services. And, you know, there are a lot of people that weren't happy when we just, or it was previous board, cut trash to one day a week during the off-season. I mean, imagine if we were shrinking our police department in half, or fire, I mean, you know, that, that's horrendous to think about, but either people would have to be willing to take on more of a tax burden, if the money just wasn't there from property values, or cut services. And that's why I think it's important that, you know, it, it's hard to convince people when they're gonna have to pay more and make sacrifices. It, it's not a fun thing to convince people of, and they're often resistant, but if you look long-term, bigger vision. That's a lot less than what could happen to them down the road, so.
In terms of the total town assessed value, the area that's in the project, the oceanfront area, is about five percent, or about of the total town's value. And the, all of the properties that are in the AV, that is velocity, which includes quite a few properties on the west side of the beach road, where the beach is very, very narrow, if you add all of those together, it's approximately eight to ten percent of our total value. So if we lose a significant portion of that value, that's roughly the proportion of our levy that we would lose. Whatever we lose on the levy, that's what we also lose in shared revenue. It's a double whammy.
So I guess we really, it's upon us to make a decision to go forward or to not. That's really where we are with the discussion.
Did you say you would, you would want an additional, two motions, one to proceed with the local project, and the second one to request the one percent from the county, is that correct?
Correct.
They'd be two separate.
Yes, since I kind of separated the federal two or six.
You want a combined motion, or a single, or double motion? What would you prefer?
We're doing the single motion, as far as I'm concerned.
I'm ready.
Okay, okay, Mary, did you get that?
So wait a minute, did, did someone make a motion?
No, no.
Okay, we're just talking about what's in it, okay.
Okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we proceed with the local project, as previously described, and also that we request that the Dare County Board of Commissioners implement the additional one cent occupancy tax that has been designated for beach nourishment funding, as authorized by the General Assembly.
I'll second that.
Open the floor for any further discussion?
I'm gonna say my vote's gonna be one for one way and one for the other way. If it hadn't been done that way, it would be much easier.
Okay, let's split it.
Well, we can split the motions back up.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll move that the, we move forward with a local plan for beach nourishment from Tanya Drive north of the Kill Devil Hills line modeled on the areas authorized in the Dare County Beach Erosion Abatement and Shoreline Protection Plan.
I'll second it.
Discussion? I have something I wanna, and this goes back to Greg's comment earlier with this, if they determine in the engineering study for this, that actually, in addition to the taper, that we need to do more, does that matter to this motion, or, I mean, are we, okay?
It just means we're gonna have more work to do, and we're gonna have to get hot to find somebody to get the easiest way.
Got it, okay. That was my question with that part. Okay, any further discussion on this motion to proceed with the local project? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so that motion carries.
Okay, and I, I move that the Dare County Board of Commissioners be requested to implement the one percent additional occupancy tax designated for beach nourishment, as authorized by the North Carolina General Assembly.
I'll second that motion.
Discussion, any further discussion? I again have one more thing, and I'm sorry I didn't ask this earlier, but I know in a couple of meetings I've sat in, we discussed not having this increase in occupancy tax occur until the January of 2014. Should we include that? And, and that would give the...
I suggest we allow the Board of Commissioners, the County Board of Commissioners, to determine the best date for implementation.
Thank you. I don't think they're gonna be able to do it before then, is what I was told.
Just wanna make sure there allows the time for the real estate market to do what they need, or the property management. Okay, so, any, there's a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. So the next step is, we contact Ken?
Actually, in fact, Greg is currently, has currently been in contact with Ken Wilson, and they are working on a proposal for the town that will be reviewed by the attorney, and then we'll bring it to the board for, for your blessings.
Coastal is our, our, our guy with, just working on this project for it.
Yes, sir.
Right, some people may not know that.
Oh, yes.
And he's also working with Duck on their study as well, so, of the firm is.
May I suggest, Mayor, that we also ask for a proposed schedule as part of that?
That will be, yes, sir, on there.
Should be.
Great.
I wanna thank everybody for listening to this. I know some has been said before, but it's a, a decision that, as far as money goes, it may not, we may not, I'm pretty sure we'd never make one that this significant, and I know it gets to a point where you're kind of beating a dead horse, but there's a, anybody that has any questions should bring them forth, should look at the information, call the town, call any of us, if you have questions. If we don't have an answer, we'll get it for you, but this is something that we need to understand as, as much as we can. So I appreciate you bearing with us if it's something you've heard before, and appreciate your patience.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to new business. Item number one is, one A, Proposed Amendments to the Town Code. The first one's under A. This is to schedule a public hearing on proposed zoning amendment to section one fifty-three point zero eight two, section B two D, exceptions to add minimum distance of accessory structures from the primary structure, to add maximum number of accessory structures per site, and a maximum combined square footage of accessory structures for commercial buildings. Greg?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, the Planning Board recommends approval of this amendment to our town code, and it was reviewed by the Planning Board on April sixteenth. And, and what it does is it, it establishes some parameters that are lacking currently in the code for commercial accessory use structures. It, it allows, as the mayor said, for some distance from the primary structures. It requires a maximum number of accessory structures, you can have three, and a combined square footage that would truly keep it accessory, and, and not make it some kind of ancillary use, or another primary use that might emerge in an accessory structure. So this is maybe a little bit more than housekeeping, it does set up standards and regulations, so, but I think it's a good, a good change to our code, and lets the accessory structures be regulated for what they really should be, is accessory to the primary structure.
Thank you. Any questions for Greg or discussion? The purpose of tonight is to specifically schedule the, the public hearing, if we wish this, for this to go to a public hearing.
Well, while you're looking at it, one final thing is, it is in the exceptions section. It is something other than building in the building envelope, so if you decide that you can't build within the building envelope, then you have to abide by this particular section of the code.
I'll make a motion, we schedule a public hearing for proposed, proposed, sorry, proposed zoning amendment one fifty-three point zero eight two B two D, exceptions to add minimum distance of accessory structures from the primary structure, add maximum number of accessory structures per site, and a maximum combined square footage of accessory structures for commercial buildings.
Sir, second?
Time and date?
For, what date, Debbie?
June tenth at five thirty.
For June tenth at five thirty.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion, any? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. The next is, underneath business is one, item one B. This is a proposed amendment to chapter thirty-one, Boards and Commissions, section thirty-one point two zero, specifically for the Appearance Commission that was established. And this is to add an elected official to the commission and clarify the membership I guess I can speak to this, probably most appropriately. I have been, when we, when we developed this and appointed this commission, we actually left it kind of vague. I've been attending the meetings, the first meeting, I actually presided over the meeting, but then I wasn't sure whether I was really a member of the group, or whether I was just there as the liaison. So this is really just to firm up what is the purpose and role of, right now it would be me, in future years, it could be someone else, but just, you know, the last meeting I sat there going, I don't know whether I should vote or not vote. So this would help kind of just know what the role is for the elected official that is serving, so.
Was there also a, should, is there, or shouldn't there have been a stipulation that a member of the Planning Board be on that, or not?
That's already in there.
That's in there? Okay.
But they're not moving.
All right, okay, that's fine. So we have somebody there, or we don't? We don't?
It's more than it is.
Okay, that's the next meeting. Thank you. I thought there was something going on there, I didn't know what it was.
And this will not set a precedent.
About any other committee meeting?
Am I gonna find myself on a committee?
We've spared you so far.
I know.
And try to be respectful.
Maybe the beach nourishment.
It will not set a precedent for you personally, Bill. No. Okay, so, anyway, would anyone like to make a motion? It'd just be nice to have the language clear, for not only currently, but this is, you know, we, we appointed members to two different entities when we were creating this. We created the Appearance Commission at the same time, we created the Baumtrack Site Study Commission. And that is, the Baumtrack Site Study Commission is an entity that's meeting for a certain period of time, and then they're disbanding. This was established as an ongoing committee and commission, so I think it's important to have that language clarified, it'll outlive us, so, okay.
I'd like to make a motion, we schedule a public hearing on chapter thirty-one, Boards and Commissions?
We can just make, make this one. We can just make this, we can just propose to do this.
I don't need a public hearing.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We can just make this a proposed amendment to the code.
Let's do that.
Okay.
It's not even late, and I'm getting punchy here already.
Okay, I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, the next item is a...
Mayor, actually, the motion that we need is for the board to approve the amendment to chapter thirty-one, section thirty-one point two, as presented, and then a motion for the board to name the member of the elected official to be appointed to that commission.
So here you go, Bill. Just joking. If you wanna take my seat on this.
I figured that, I figured there was something.
Okay, so, can Mike's motion, the first one, be that we were stat, making that change to the code? So, Mary's kinda, is that okay?
If, okay, and, and...
And then now do a new one?
Now do one that actually appoints the member of the commissioners, of the Board of Commissioners to serve.
Okay.
It's the last sentence in my memo.
I move that, that the mayor be appointed to serve on this commission.
I'll second that. And I'm happy to continue serving, so, any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Debbie, if we would follow your guidance to the point, we would have a few less motions this evening, but sorry, we're drifting, but thank you.
We're kinda new, we're kinda new with it.
We're just winging, I'm just joking, okay.
We just started recently.
We will move on to one C, item one C, and this is a proposed amendment to chapter ninety-five, Fire Prevention and Protection, section ninety-five point zero seven, referencing aerial luminary devices, flying sky lanterns, or wish lanterns prohibited. And Chief Tillie, would you like to introduce and do an overview for us? Thank you. Good evening.
Earlier this year, Fire Marshal's Office had quite a few requests for these types of devices here in our town. We, we denied the request based upon our current code, ninety-five point zero two, which addresses pit fires. The code talks about pit fires and how they're not allowed, but then it also goes on, it talks about any type of open burning would not be allowed for any reason. After doing research on these, this item, we felt that with the increase in sales, popularity of these devices, and we saw a couple of group-ons trying to sell these things in large amounts, we thought it would be important to go ahead and clarify the code, and prevent these items showing up here in our town, increasing, increasing the fire hazard associated with them.
Okay, thank you. Discussion, comments?
No, I think it's pretty clear, I think, what we need to do there.
Yeah, I agree.
And I sat in on, it was one of the previous mayor luncheons that I attended, and there's a couple of other towns that are adopting, Kitty Hawk one of them, adopting this, and not only for the significant fire risk that it carries, but also the environmental potential hazard that it carries, 'cause if you don't go later and clean it up, then, then you've got that debris threatening the environment. And as Debbie had prepared too, or you had, you know, often these are done at wedding ceremonies, and they're done in the evening, instead of what, you know, some people used to do riceeder bubbles, they're lighting these things, and so the likelihood of being able to trace them and find them, either later that night in the darkroom, you know, the next day, is highly unlikely, so, wow. It may be cute and pretty to see, it's just not the most appropriate thing, so. Okay, would someone like to make a motion to...
I move adoption of the proposed amendment to chapter ninety-five, Fire Prevention and Protection, section ninety-five point oh seven, aerial luminary devices, flying sky lanterns, or wish lanterns prohibited as presented.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number two, under new business, is the presentation of the town manager's recommended budget for fiscal year twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, and the... budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014, and the 2014-2015 year plan.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. In accordance with the provisions in North Carolina General Statute 15913, the governing body shall adopt a budget ordinance no earlier than 10 days after the budget is presented, and not later than January, excuse me, July the 1st. Before adopting the budget ordinance, the board will need to hold a public hearing, at which time any person who wishes to be heard on the recommended budget may appear. This hearing may be held at any time after the presentation, either prior to or subsequent to the budget work session. Would recommend this evening that the board consider holding your work session on Wednesday, May the 22nd at 5:30, and the required public hearing Monday, June 10th, also at 5:30. And a motion would be in order to schedule the budget work session and public hearing. And then just briefly, I'd like to comment on this particular recommended budget. It is with the new evaluation that was held. The budget does propose a .3209 per $100 valuation at Valorem tax rate. The state law requires that in the year in which a general reappraisal of real property has been conducted, a statement of the revenue neutral property tax shall be included in the budget. This is the rate that is estimated to produce revenue for the next fiscal year equal to the revenue that would have been produced by the current tax rate if no reappraisal had occurred. The rate is increased by a growth factor equal to the average annual percent increase in the tax base due to improvement since the last reappraisal. The purpose of providing the revenue neutral rate is to provide citizens with comparable information. And as I stated at the beginning, the revenue neutral rate is the recommended tax rate in this budget. And then lastly, I would like to thank each town staff member who contributed to the development of the budget with great appreciation extended to Finance Director Beverly Brooks and members of the Finance Department, who have donated a considerable time and energy to provide the financial data for the budget. And I'd also like to thank the board for their direction and support that we received from you.
Thank you. Okay, so, as far as for this evening, staff is recommending first to hold our budget work session on Wednesday, May the 22nd. And that is a regularly scheduled meeting time.
It's already on the schedule.
Right, and would that be in lieu of a meeting, that we would just do the budget work session, or would it be we do the budget, and then if there were any business, handle that afterwards?
That would be my suggestion. And with that only being a little over a week away, what we're planning to do is any items that we can defer until June 10th, we would strive to do that, just bring to you on the 22nd, items of time would be of the essence.
Okay.
And certainly, if there's more time needed, you can schedule another work session.
Okay.
We just thought that that would be a date that would, everyone would already have marked on their calendars.
We do.
Okay. Is it where my head is right now? I should just tell you what I'm thinking.
We just need a motion to have the workshop on the, on the May, on Wednesday, the 22nd, and a public hearing on Monday, June 10th.
Right, and I guess that's where I was kind of thinking, can we wait till, we can't wait, no, can we wait till the 22nd of May to schedule that public hearing?
I don't believe we can.
Does it need to be? Or I guess if for some reason we needed another session, we need to do it in between May 22nd and June 10th?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, actually, you can have work sessions after you have your public hearing. Like, if you, if you have...
Because we're not approving the budget, we're just having a, we're not necessarily approving the budget on June 10th. We just have to do that really by June 30.
You would not be acting on the budget on June 10th. We would bring the budget that you would act on back to you on June 26th.
Okay, that's, okay, that's great.
I don't believe there's a meeting on June the 26th. Yes, there is, yes, there is, okay.
Fourth Wednesday.
Yeah, that works.
I was just trying to map out in my mind, making sure that we had enough time to adequately review it, take in the comment, and, okay. Okay, so it can be in one motion and the two things. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that they hold a budget work session on Wednesday, May the 22nd, 2013, at 5:30 PM, and a public hearing for the budget on Monday, June 10th, 2013, at 5:30 PM.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you Debbie, and...
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you Beverly and your staff. So, look forward to reviewing this in great detail, so, thank you. Okay, next Debbie, I'm going to introduce, we have two presentations on our agenda.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Our first presentation this evening is the Community Care Clinic of Dare. Rick Gray is the executive director. As I'm sure most of you are aware, we currently do partner with the Community Clinic of Dare, and in the past, the executive director has come before the board and has shared how that partnership has worked. Good to see you, Rick.
Good evening, I'm Rick Gray, Executive Director for the Community Care Clinic of Dare. With me tonight is my board chair, Bill Gleason. I'm here kind of twofold. One is to update you on what's been going on at the clinic since last year, and second is to publicly thank you for your continued support. As I think you all know, we're a 501(c)(3), a nonprofit. We provide basic healthcare, medication assistance, and wellness education to the uninsured and financially challenged people living or working in Dare County. Since our inception in 2005, we've seen over 2,700 separate patients. We currently have 765 patients. For these patients, we are their medical home, we're their doctor. Two-thirds of our patients have a chronic illness, hypertension, diabetes, or COPD. For a lot of them, a combination. These conditions require management, and we provide it. I would like you to know that over 35% of our patients have a Kill Devil Hills zip code. It's by far our largest population base. Forty-four percent of our patients work, yet even though 44% work, 62% are at the federal poverty level, or less. Last year, we had over 2,100 office visits. We also provided $1.6 million of prescription medications to our patients, all of this at no cost. So, that's what we've been doing. There's one little bit of news I'd like to update you about, is we are in process of moving. We are about, we're trying to move, we are moving into the old Outer Banks Medical Center at the end of Barnes Street in Nag's Head, the original medical center here on the beach. It's right beside Colony Ridge, Brithaven. We've entered into a lease agreement with Town of Nag's Head. We're doing a couple of tweakings inside right now, and hope to be in there within about three weeks. So, that's kind of, it's a big deal for us, it's a big move. And as you know, we could not operate without the support of our community. For that purpose, I'd like to thank you for your continuing support, ask you for continued support, and also wish you all good health.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
So, do you have any questions for Rick?
Rick, what's your total budget?
It's right at one, around 300, yeah.
Three hundred thousand annually?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next this evening, we have Ms. Lois Mary Haney, the President of Food for Thought, requesting to establish a partnership during the upcoming fiscal year.
I am Lois Mary Haney, President of Food for Thought, and I want to thank you all so much for having me here tonight. And I'm here to request that we become a partner with Kill Devil Hills. Healthy food for strong minds and bodies, that's the mission of Food for Thought for the children of Dare County. Food for Thought provides nutritious weekend meals for the children of Dare County. Children who qualify for free or reduced lunch in our schools also qualify for our program. A letter goes home at the beginning of the school year to all the parents, asking them if they want their children to participate in our program. We currently are serving the children in all five elementary schools, the two middle schools, First Flight and Manio, Head Start, the Alternative High School, and Hatteras Secondary. I can't give you the exact number of children in Kill Devil Hills who participate in our program. We don't know who the children are, nor do we want to. But I will tell you that of the children, I, the conservative guess would be 125, if you include the children in First Flight Elementary, and those in Nag's Head Elementary, and the First Flight Middle School, and also the Alternative School. Interesting about the Alternative School is, a few years ago, one of their teachers came to us, because our building is right next door practically to their campus, and said they were looking for some things for their children to do as volunteers. And we welcomed them, they come every week, and they help us pack. Two years ago, they were nominated for the Volunteer Award for the State of North Carolina, and were awarded that for Dare County. So, we are, we're pleased to work with our community. Some of our newest members are the Dare Challenge Group. And the Dare Challenge Group comes over when we receive shipments, and helps unload of those shipments, and some of the ladies come over and help us pack. We have a number of churches, 12 of the churches in the area, come and help us pack, and stock, and deliver. We have six community groups who do this, and we also have three business community partners who come and help us pack and do our deliveries. We are also a 501(c)(3). We have a total of 385 volunteers who work with Food for Thought. Better than 99% of what Food for Thought takes in, in revenue, goes to feed our children. We are 100% volunteers. We have no paid staff at Food for Thought, nor we have since we started in 2006 with a pilot program in Manio Elementary School. We provide a weekend meal for the children during the school year, approximately 32 weeks. The cost is $250 a year per child, and that's going to be going up next year. So, with even just 100 children we serve in Kill Devil Hills, that would be 20, over $25,000 that goes directly back into your community. We also, in conjunction with the Dare County Health Department, put out a healthy hints newsletter. And this letter goes into the bags for the kids once a month, and it gives them recipes, their parents' ideas on healthy living, exercise programs, brushing their teeth, washing their hands. And the local newspapers have always, also been kind enough to publish this for us once a month, so it goes out to all the children in all the communities. I'd like to share a little bit about what the people, the teachers, the parents, and the children. We put out a survey at the end of the year, every year, and asked them what they think or what we can do better to serve them. We had a teacher, actually, a teacher from Nag's Head say, "My students so look forward to receiving the weekend food bags on Friday. I know it helps them focus, knowing they will have food to eat at home over the weekend." And a parent, also, I believe this was a First Flight parent, "Thank you so much for all you do. When my daughter spends the weekend with her dad, who is out of work, she shares some of his food with him." From a child. "I love getting my bags. The apples and oranges are my very favorite part. There's no reason for any child in Kill Devil Hills, Dare County, North Carolina, or the United States to go hungry. Thank you for your time, and please join Food for Thought in ending hunger in Kill Devil Hills."
Thank you very much for your presentation, and certainly for what you and your organization do. Certainly a strong number of volunteers to support that. Any questions, or...
Lois Mary, what is your budget this year?
$149.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. I think as far as the financial request, the appropriate time to discuss that would be when we're reviewing the budget and having our budget workshop. That way, we're looking at the full picture of our budget. Okay, thank you both, both groups, for being here tonight and sharing your information with us. Okay, with that, we will move on to Commissioner's Agenda. Commissioner Pitt, anything?
I have no items for the agendas tonight, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Burton?
I want to thank Chief Tilly and your firemen for coming out. We have, we had an Alzheimer's walk, I guess it was last weekend, it was on May the 4th, and the Kill Devil Hills Fire Department was represented, and although it was a blustery cold day, it should not be that cold on a day that we're walking, the fire department was there, and very well represented, thank you. And this is the second annual, and the second year they've been there. We raised over $14,000 for Alzheimer's in North Carolina, or actually in Dare County, it's Alzheimer's North Carolina, but that money will actually stay in Dare County, so. That was a good day, even though it was very, very cold. So, I want to thank you, and the Police Department as well. There was a couple of walks going on that day, so I know, I know the Police Department had their hands full. There was, there was 100 or so of us, but there were 300 children that walked before us, so, God bless you, is all I can say on that. The Alzheimer's Walk, the former mayor was one of our ambassadors, so, I actually got to see Ray, so that was, that was nice as well. And I just want to remind or tell anyone who doesn't actually know about an event that's coming up on Wednesday, the Walk Ride of Silence on May the 15th at 6:30, it's going to be right here at the Baum Center. And it's going to be to commemorate the lives that have been lost for bicycle and pedestrian deaths. And Jack McCombs could probably talk to it much better than I could. He's, he's been a big instigator in this, even though he does not want the recognition. And I know Sheila and I have talked about this, and we are both going to participate. I'm, I'm going to walk and try to get my family. If, if you don't know what else you want to get me for my birthday, come walk, that's my birthday, so, come walk.
That's great, thank you. Mayor Burton?
No, I don't have anything at the moment, thank you.
Thank you. Under the mayor's agenda, I have one proclamation this evening, and this is a proclamation designating May 15th, 2013, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and May 12th through the 18th, 2013, as Police Week. In fact, at the walk, we will also be recognizing this, this event, since the, the walk is on May 15th, and so those dates correspond, so, as far as that particular day and the recognition there, it's basically honoring those who have fallen in the line of duty in police work, so, even though, you know, both of these are, are events have somewhat of a solemn message, I think it's important not only to show respect, and, but also to raise awareness, not, not just for, well, for cycling and pedestrian safety and accidents, and certainly to recognize what our law enforcement officers do on a daily basis, putting their, their lives at risk, and recognizing those who have served and lost loved ones. So, with that, actually, just a little bit of history, it was in 1962 that President John F. Kennedy first signed the proclamation designating May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day. first signed the proclamation designating May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And that week start, or that day starts the week that's designated as Police Week. So with that, I would call for a motion to adopt the president, excuse me, adopt the proclamation designating May 15th, 2013 as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and May, sorry, May 12th through the 18th, 2003 as Police Week.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Town manager's agenda?
Nothing this evening, ma'am.
Town attorney's agenda?
Mayor, I do need to give you an update on the matter we discussed before, the Milton Mays-Titman House that we were talking about proceeding with condemnation. Mr. Milton did arrange for the house to be removed, so we don't need to deal with that. It's done. And we do have some other issues out there, and I have obtained a judgment from the town that allows us to abate those nuisances, but he hasn't until about the first week of July to get those up. And he's in touch with my office fairly often and is promising us that he's going to get that done and that the town won't have to incur any expense and charge it to them to go out and take care of that. So we're monitoring that. We're keeping an eye on it, and it's, we are moving.
That's wonderful. That's a great, great update. I knew, you know, at the last meeting, this was the meeting where he was kind of, do it, or we have, we're forced into action to allocate those funds. So not only does that keep us from having to allocate those funds, it's what Mr. Milton had requested from us. So that's great. Thank you so much. Any questions or comments for Steve?
No.
Thank you for the work you're doing with him, and that's great. I know the neighbors surrounding that property appreciate it as well. Consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Consent agenda this evening, the minutes from the April 8th and April 24th, 2014 meeting for approval, recommendation for the 2012-2013 lease purchase agreement. This would be with BB&amp;T that submitted a rate of 1.03% for three years, and they've agreed to the terms of six semi-annual payments with no advance fees. Approval of the consent agenda will record approval of the attached budget amendment and to record the annual lease per vehicle in the accompanying resolution. The attorney will review and approve the lease prior to its execution. Number three is the North Carolina Public Employees Deferred Compensation Plan 457. This is an additional retirement plan that the state of North Carolina now offers to public employees. There is no cost to the town associated with the third-party administration of this. An approval of the consent agenda would authorize Mayor Davies to sign the resolution to implement the plan, and the town manager to sign the third-party administrator agreement. Number four is a recommendation for audit services for fiscal year 2013, 14, 14, 15, 15, 16. We received a proposal from our current auditors, Doughty and Osborne, for up, these upcoming years for a cost of $22,250 each year, with an additional $2,500 should a single audit be required. We feel that this is a very reasonable proposal and would like to recommend the board continuation of the town's relationship with Doughty and Osborne for these audit services for the three fiscal years stated above. Approval of the consent agenda will record the board's approval of these services as outlined. And once again, this agreement would be subject to the approval of the town attorney. Number five is Dare County, Kill Devil Hills, and our local agreements. This would be for resource sharing and debris removal, as would be necessary with emergencies. And lastly, a memorandum of agreement, the North Carolina Sedimentation Control Commission and local government, for local sedimentation and erosion control ordinance and to maintain the local, the program. This is enforcing the Sedimentation Pollution Control Act of 1973, and approval of consent agenda will record your approval of the agreement. And we would recommend approval of the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion or questions?
I question the inclusion of item four. I, that, this, this has not been up at bid for over five years now. Is that correct? Isn't it time that we at least make a survey to see if there would be any interested bidders? It seems to me to go for eight years without a, a public competition on something that really should be competed as a, not, not that I have any problem with, with the firm. I think they've done a wonderful job and so forth, but I, but I, I'm not so sure we should just go ahead and routinely reauthorize this contract year after year after year without any reopening for competition.
Beverly and I did have some discussion concerning that, and our, our reasoning for making this recommendation was twofold. One, the experience that this firm does have with the town.
I agree.
Two, we're, we're not sure how much local interest we would have. The, the number of local firms that do government audits have really dwindled. But whatever the desire of the board. I will, I will say, this, this cost is based on an early commitment.
I understand.
It would not necessarily be what their proposal would be at a later date. This would enable them to be able to arrange their schedule accordingly.
Yes, I understand.
To that end, I mean, was there a specific date that this early agreement was to be executed?
There wasn't a specific date, but we, we did let Ms. Osborne know that we would be bringing it to the board this evening. I, I don't, I don't think it would, I don't think it would follow through to the length of time it would take to get proposals, to put out a, a request for a proposal. Beverly, do you feel that?
No, I don't think so, because her, excuse me, she will be doing the audit. It's already been approved for this fiscal year that we're in now. So this would be sometime later that we would be doing RFPs for the future years. I do know that we have done, the last time that we did on RFPs, we only had two.
Right. No, I'm aware of that.
One was quite...
And that's why I think we should at least inquire. I, I'm not so certain that, that there would be anybody interested, but, but if there is, we should probably consider recompete.
Well, and I'm, I'm not opposed to that. Also, back to some of my school days, remember hearing that you, though we may not have that option, it's nice every so often to have a new set of eyes doing an audit as well. But on the flip side, I hate to risk at this stage compromising what the price would be and having a significant increase on price. Could it be possible that we're moving forward with this and when, but also for, for the next?
Well, this commits for three years. This commits for the upcoming, not...
To pay that for each year. It's locking in those three years.
The following years.
So maybe not commit for three years, commit for...
Then we change your price, too.
I, I don't see anything wrong with committing for three years if they're the only offerer or the only likely offerer. But if there is public interest in competing, I, I think that this should be an open competition, even if it does cost us slightly more. I, I think we have a, an obligation to our citizens and to the public to periodically hold open competitions for these services, just as we would for any other professional service. Incidentally, I, I think they're a wonderful firm, and they do a, a super job, but, but...
So, and Steve, help me procedurally now. Should we remove this from the consent agenda so, for the discussion? Because if that's the only...
Yeah, that's my suggestion. I'll move, I'll move its removal from this agenda and rescheduling for a, an ongoing, an upcoming agenda.
You can, you can discuss it this evening. You just need to remove it from the consent agenda and vote on the consent agenda and then discuss this separately.
Right, that's right.
Okay. Do we need a motion to, yes?
Yes.
You already made that motion.
Right.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second. I'll second that. Sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So Steve, in a 2-2, it doesn't carry...
Fails.
Okay. So we're back to, I feel like I'm playing. So we're back to the consent agenda as it stands. Okay, so, so item four stays in the consent agenda now, and is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. Consent agenda is approved. And...
So there were no nays? I'm sorry.
There were no nays.
No nays.
Okay, so we're moving on to public comment. This is the second time that we set aside this evening for public comment. Is there anyone that would like to speak at this public comment? Jack, welcome back.
I already gave my name and address. Is that okay? I just want to briefly talk about the Ride of Silence and the Walk of Silence. A lot of our citizens don't understand that we have a real problem in the Outer Banks with cyclists and pedestrians being killed. There's about 50 cases per year of people being killed or severely injured, and some of those have been very good friends of mine. The Ride of Silence was started 10 years ago in Dallas, Texas, when a very popular cyclist was killed by a school bus. And his best friend said, "I'm going to have a ride to honor this man." 10 days later, they had a ride, and 1,000 cyclists showed up that shocked all the local governments in the area. Since then, in the 10 years, that has expanded to 49 states in the United States, 23 foreign countries, 323 communities within those 49 states, 13 communities in North Carolina, with Kill Devil Hills being the 13th. The whole point of this thing is to bring awareness of the public to this really serious problem. The more light we can shine on it, the more likely the public will be sensitive to pedestrians and cyclists. And that fact alone may save a lot of lives. I want to particularly thank the Kill Devil Hills Police Department, who are supporting the Ride of Silence by providing traffic control on those parts that we need that, that information. Everybody sitting in here, I hope come out and do the walk. And our mayor is going to be there. At least one of the commissioners, and I see another commissioner walking quite frequently, and...
When he can.
I would hope that you would all come out. News releases have gone out to all local media, as well as the Virginia Pilot, and it's hoped that they'll, I, I got a call from one today, they will definitely be there. We're going to have two men available for interviews that have been struck and injured by motorists, and they're going to be able to give interviews about their experiences and their injuries. Neither one of them was at fault. I want to make sure that you also understand, some of these incidents are caused by the pedestrian or the cyclist, and we need to shed light on that problem, too. I'm a cyclist. We need all the cycling community and the people that walk in here to practice safe cycling and safe walking. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. And thank for, thank you for all of the work that you've put into this, not just this event, but just being such an advocate for cyclist safety and awareness. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? Hey, welcome.
My name is Donnie King. I don't have a Kill Devil Hills address, however I do. I'm starting a group that represents everyone in Dare County. It's called Better Beaches OBX. And I'm here today just to hear, you know, how far along we are on the issue of nourishment, which is one part of the stewardship of our coastline and, you know, trying to protect it and also the properties involved. After seeing everything that was done today and the proactive efforts, I especially say proactive when I consider, you know, where we are here in Kill Devil Hills and where we are where my bread is buttered at my restaurant in Kitty Hawk. And, you know, you're, you're in good shape, you're, you're ahead, and you're taking the steps to, you know, stay that way and, and, you know, make sure that this community can thrive and grow as we move forward. And that is something that I very much appreciate, and I hope to see more of. So again, I just wanted to come up here and commend you on your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much for being here.
What's your establishment up there in Kitty Hawk? Is that...
I have Ocean Boulevard Restaurant.
Ocean Boulevard, that's what I thought.
We're on the west side of the beach road. My house is in Nag's Head, so I leave this big community on a 35-foot sand dune, you know, all nice and safe. And then I head to work and stare at the ocean a lot of the time when...
You don't have to look very far, do you?
But, you know, it's a great town, and, you know, we do well there, but we have to, you know, maintain our interests. So thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak tonight at public comment? Okay. We'll close public comment. Response to public comment? Any additional comments? Okay, thank you. With that, we can take a motion to adjourn.
I move adjournment.
Anything else? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any appeals? Thank you all for being here tonight. Good night. Thank you. We'll see you Wednesday at the Walk.